Good afternoon, everyone. I'm pleased to be here as Dean of the Washington College of Law, representing President Neil Kerwin and Provost Bass, that unfortunately could not be here today, to welcome all of you to America's University School of International Service for this quotation-marked discussion with the Prime Minister of the Netherlands, Mark Rutte, a well-known personality with an extensive record of service and commitment to international affairs, who has served as the Prime Minister of the Netherlands since 2010. The Prime Minister will be introduced later by Professor Egan, but let me express my admiration for the Prime Minister's commitment, among other things, to a power of education. He was the State Secretary for Education, Culture and Science from 2004 and 2006, but I noticed that for many years he had been a weekly guest teacher at the high school in his hometown of Den Haag, showing a personal commitment that goes beyond an official function. So I think that that's very inspiring for all of us. We're receiving Prime Minister Rutte in a unique school, the School of International Service, that is a source of pride for American university as a whole, because of the quality of its worldwide programs, a top-notch research faculty that undertakes the analysis of important issues, both from the point of view of political analysis, policy analysis, and also looking at the underpinnings and the theoretical foundations of international relations. Understanding the need to combine research and teaching with the powerful tradition of engagement and service, SIS has distinguished itself also by exemplifying the idea that all of us have a role to play in imagining and contributing to achieving a world with peace, more fairness and inclusion. SIS has a richly diverse body of roughly 3,000 students from around the nation and over 150 countries. The students here are currently committed, engaged and aspire to be global leaders, committed to international careers and service, and united by the spirit of inquiry and engagement. Many of them are here; there was no more space to receive you, Prime Minister Rutte, and then I think that looking forward to your comments. Finally, let me say that for me, receiving a Prime Minister of the Netherlands has a special meaning. I was a political refugee in the Netherlands, became a faculty member at the University of Utrecht, and received my PhD in law from the University of Amsterdam, and we have kept academic and personal relationships with the Netherlands, and with friends and so forth. During those years, I was able to appreciate firsthand the deep commitment of the Dutch people to the rule of law and important values of human dignity. So, Prime Minister Rutte, het is een grote eer om u te welkom te hebben. Good work.
Welcome to the School of International Service, Prime Minister Rutte. We're honoured and delighted to welcome you today, as you continue your visit to Washington, and particularly your meeting with President Obama at the White House after this event. As our second Prime Minister in two weeks, following the visit of Prime Minister Trudeau, we welcome you to the same site that President Obama spoke last year about the Iranian nuclear deal, and he spoke about the importance of strong principled diplomacy and the importance of using our power to try to bind nations together in a system of international law, something that's at the heart of the integration project in Europe, of which the Dutch are a founding member. Along with Ambassador Schuur, the embassy staff and guests and students, Prime Minister Rutte, you have come to DC at an opportune time in transatlantic relations, given the many security, economic and political challenges in Europe, as well as the expression of solidarity from the United States for recent developments in Europe. Coming here as the Dutch Prime Minister and the current holder of the EU Presidency of the European Council, Prime Minister Rutte is serving a second term as Prime Minister and Minister of General Affairs since the election in 2012. He was previously parliamentary leader of the People's Party for Freedom and Democracy, a parliamentary leader, and previously served as the State Secretary for Social Affairs and Employment, a member of the House of Representatives, and the State Secretary for Education, Culture and Science, something that my colleague has already mentioned in previous coalition governance. He has served as Prime Minister for more than five years, one of the longest-serving prime ministers in the Rutte Verhagen and Rutte Asher governments, and in addition to the aforementioned cabinet positions, he marks a distinguished career in public service. We are the School of International Service, committed to public service. So it's equally fitting in a university setting that he serves as a guest lecturer in The Hague, and he actually teaches social studies. Thank you. Please join me in welcoming Prime Minister Rutte.
Well, good afternoon to all of you. I'm really excited about the fact that we have a chance to talk together. I will make some short introductory remarks, and then I hope that we will have a full round of questions and answers. Professor, thank you so much for your very warm introduction, a very personal introduction. You even told me that when you asked the telephone directory for the private number, the home number of the then-Prime Minister Jopzen L, you got it, you got an invitation to his home, and you spoke with him. I have to tell you, when you come to the Netherlands, that we have changed things a bit since the 1970s, but still, still, we try to maintain that open culture in our political, as politicians. But this was a very, very special story, and also your personal story is very special and very recommendable, and I'm so happy also for that fact to stand here. Let me also say that I'm standing here, obviously, here today in front of you in the wake of Brussels, of the bombings in Lahore, Istanbul, all these terror attacks, these places where in recent weeks innocent victims and innocent Zid citizens were hit by these terror attacks. I believe it is our duty to jointly fight extremism and keep on working on a safer, a more prosperous world, of course, for everybody, for all citizens. And I would like to say that it is in this spirit, and in memory of all the victims of terror, that I want to discuss with you the state of relations between the United States and Europe, which will be the focal point of my introductory remarks. A few years ago, I read a headline in The Washington Post that made me think that's something we really need to talk about, and I believe this is a good opportunity to do that. And the headline was "Europe Falls Apart." The good news is, this isn't reality, but unfortunately, it is the perception. There's a lot of turmoil in the world right now. We all know the war in Syria and the migration crisis it generated, our continuing battle against violent extremism and terrorism, and the precarious situation in Ukraine. These are crises with a global impact, but at present, they are playing out closer to Europe than the United States. And let's be honest, these problems aren't going away anytime soon. And I understand why the US is watching closely to see how Europe will respond. And this isn't the first time that Europe has been described using less-than-positive imagery. About 10 years ago, Donald Rumsfeld, the then-Secretary of Defence, spoke of a stagnant, irrelevant, old Europe, which included the Netherlands, and a dynamic, ambitious new Europe, by which he meant southern and eastern Europe. And this is a picture of Europe few would recognize today, luckily. The fact is, and that is what I want to stress here today, Europe is taking action. And I am personally witnessing that firsthand right now. Indeed, the Netherlands currently holds the Presidency of the Council of the European Union. So I've been closely involved, for example, in the migration deal with Turkey, one of the EU's biggest neighbours and a key NATO ally. This process might look messy from here, but Europe has always resolved problems like these step by step, or as my German colleague would say, "Schritt für Schritt." Over the past few decades, Europe has evolved into a deal-making giant. Step by step, we have built a strong economic union, in which the Netherlands, as a founding member of the European Union, has always played an active role. And this has brought Europe unprecedented prosperity. For years, European countries have consistently topped the world rankings for wealth and wellbeing, business climate and healthcare. Europe is now a market of 500 million consumers with big purchasing power. The Union proved its value during the stormy years of financial crisis, which we weathered by making solid agreements about our banks and our currency, the euro, and by making clear agreements with Greece. But we also have to be honest that there is still progress to be made in Europe. And we can do that, in my belief, by returning to the EU's core task, which is deepening the European single market. And we can bolster our market by linking it to North America and its fast market of nearly 500 million American, Canadian and Mexican consumers. So this is a crucial opportunity, particularly for a country like mine. The United States currently is the biggest investor in the Netherlands, and my small country, we are almost twice the size of New Jersey, with a population smaller than Florida's, we are the third biggest investor in the United States. The EU and Canada recently concluded the Comprehensive Economic and Trade Agreement, the CETA, and the TTIP negotiations, the transatlantic trade and investment partnership negotiations with the US are progressing. President Obama has submitted the Trans-Pacific Partnership to Congress, and this is an extra incentive for us to reach agreement quickly. In addition to its economic benefits, TTIP between the EU and America will bolster our position vis-à-vis China and other emerging markets in Asia, because we will set in the standards for world trade ourselves. It will reinforce our collective position in a world where the economic, social and geopolitical landscape is changing at warp speed. Yes, indeed, I'm focusing here on economic cooperation, and I do this for a reason. History teaches us that trade reinforces peace and prosperity. But of course, trade alone isn't enough. Our relationship needs the support of a solid foundation, so that as like-minded partners we can continue forging a common path. And we have that foundation. Europe and the US are both built on the Badrock principles of democracy, freedom, the rule of law and the free market. These values have united our continents for centuries and have influenced the course of history. And though we share these values, they are not exclusive to our societies. Their practical effects, freedom of speech and thought, independent courts and a level playing field for entrepreneurs, are important to every individual in the world, from the Netherlands to Nepal and from the United States to Uganda. So this foundation should always inspire us to make the right choices for our shared future. And that's why today's meeting is so important, because you will be the next generation to put these values into practice. Making the right choices for our future includes fostering intensive transatlantic trade, but it also means pursuing peace and security within the strong NATO alliance that the Netherlands and the United States helped to establish. It's understandable that the US wants us to increase our defence budget. The US is still paying more than its fair share of the bill. But leaving that discussion aside, let me just say that NATO is underpinned by our common goal of peace and security, a goal we must strive for every day. And making the right choices means stepping up our cooperation on security. Europe and the US should act in concert when boundaries of principle are violated. A good example is our joint action on Russia. By imposing sanctions, we are drawing a line in the sand. But it is also essential to keep communicating with Russia. Without dialogue, there can be no progress. So sanctions need to be accompanied by an outstretched hand, so that we can work together to end the violence in Syria and alleviate tensions in Ukraine. The current ceasefire in both countries should lead to an end to the violence and to progress in the political sphere, so that the people of Syria and Ukraine can attain their long-held desire of living in freedom without violence and oppression. This is at the core of our common values. Making the right choice also means reaching concrete agreements at tomorrow's Nuclear Security Summit, in order to improve nuclear security worldwide and strengthen our ties further. Such agreements will make an even stronger case for our principles. Of course, there are real contrasts between Europe and the United States. Amsterdam is not Washington. We are not the United States of Europe. The US and the EU view things differently and don't always move at the same speed. And indeed, this sometimes leads to impatience or frustration, but our relationship is built on a longstanding foundation of values: freedom, democracy, the rule of law and free market principles. And these values, at the end of the day, after all the quarreling, they unite Europe and America. And I consider my country to be an integral part of this deep and lasting partnership. I know, it's tempting to look at our continents and see two very different ways of life, but in reality, they are complementary and spring from the same root, which makes for a much deeper relationship and produces far better results at the end. Thank you.
It's great to have such a great audience today, and I'm going to, in the absence of Dean Golgaya, ask a few moderated questions. And as a, I'm sitting on the stage as a committed transatlanticist, so it's wonderful to be able to ask the questions, Mr. Prime Minister. You started off by saying about the recent values, the democracy, the rule of law, protection of human rights. We can't assume that they will be irreversible, and sometimes they're challenged from within our own European democracies, and at other times from extremist, non-state actors and authoritarian regimes. So what are you proposing in terms of, from the Dutch perspective, to maintain these fundamental values?
Well, first of all, we have to acknowledge our way of living. And in the Netherlands, having seen many people with a different cultural background coming to our country, we have not always been clear on what type of society we are, what our traditions are, what our values are. And I believe it is crucial to be very open about that and to welcome other people, but at the same time, to make clear what our history is, what our values are, what our beliefs are, our roots are. And we are doing that much clearer now than we did when we were speaking about this and exchanging views on this with people visiting the Netherlands, our societies. And of course, there's always tension, always debate, but we have to be clear about where history brought us, what it means in terms of the freedom of speech, the equality of men and women, that it doesn't matter which colour of skin you have, that you can attain every position in society. These are values which we have fought for over the centuries. And I felt, growing up in the Netherlands, that in the 80s and 90s, we sometimes were a bit complacent and didn't talk enough about this, and we are doing that more now, and we could even do this more, more of this at the moment. But I believe that is part of the answer, to make sure that we have a strong society and we can still embrace other cultures and other people.
There has been a lot of drama over the negotiations with Turkey in terms of the refugee crisis. And as part of the EU-Turkish deal that was finally negotiated, it keeps a number of Muslim Syrian refugees, but it allows the travel of Muslim Turkish immigrants without the visa requirements to the rest of Europe now. Will this soften the anti-immigrant backlash, or do you feel, as some have argued, that the EU has caved into Turkish pressure, especially as there's the recent suppression of rights within Turkey?
Well, here are two things at play. One is the visa liberalisation, which means the free travel for tourists on 90-day passes. And this is an old agreement with Turkey, that if they implement all the necessary requirements, there are 72 of these requirements, if they implement them, then there will be visa liberalisation between the EU and Turkey. And they have made clear that it is their aspiration, their ambition, to do this even quicker, faster than they had committed so far. They want to do this by the 1st of July. And our reaction has been, okay, but you still have to implement all these 72 requirements. We cannot deviate from that. At the same time, we are facing big issues in terms of immigrants coming in an irregular way into the European Union. They take the boats from Turkey into Greece, they cross the Aegean Sea, people die on the sea, they take big, great risks. You have these cynical boat smugglers, who have created a whole business model around this movement of people from Turkey into Greece, and then from Greece, it was only two or three days before you came to Berlin. And they all said, we want to go to Amala, which is my German colleague. And we had to end this irregular influx of refugees from Turkey into the European Union. And of course, these are not Turkish refugees, these are refugees from Syria, sometimes from Iraq, from Afghanistan, and have a more regular form of migration. So what we want to do is now to keep people in Greece and send them back from the Greek islands into Turkey, and then we will have a regular programme to take Syrian refugees, particularly Syrian refugees from the camps in Turkey. 2.9 million Syrian refugees live currently in Turkey, so they are really doing a lot to help with the Syrian refugee crisis, 2.9 million, in the south of Turkey, in the communities, in camps. So we want to take away some of that burden and lift some of these people into the European Union. But then you will have done two things. One, it's the end of this boat smuggler model, where people die on the sea. And secondly, it will be the European Union telling the refugee to which country he or she will go to. So they will not all go to Germany. Some of them will go to Vilnius in Lithuania, or to Riga in Latvia, or they will go to Sweden, or to Spain, or Portugal, whatever. And I believe that all these countries are much better than the situation in Syria, so I still hope that they will accept that, and if not, they have a choice not to go. But you cannot have a situation where people just cross the sea, walk through the continent and then decide to which country they want to go to. But we will also in future be a place where refugees can still go to. We are a rich continent, we have to play our part in this. But the numbers have to come down, and the way we do this has to be done in a controlled manner.
Thank you. And I'm, we're very, very focused recently in Washington on the renegotiations of David Cameron's referendum.
We all are.
I heard that at one point in the European Council, you actually stepped in for him, so you've been a Brit at one point as well.
And even together, the combined economies of the Netherlands and the UK was smaller than Germany. I was so, well, I was devastated, yeah.
So if we can take ourselves out of the potential Brexit-Remain debate, you're also having a Citizens Initiative referendum on April 6, which is very timely. And this is on the free trade agreement with Ukraine, and you've gone on record as saying you hope that the voters will approve this non-binding referendum and they will meet the threshold. Are you worried, you mentioned disintegration and integration, are you worried about the results for yourself and your governments, as the parliament has ratified it already?
Well, I'm personally not in favour of referenda. I believe in a representative democracy, not in these direct questions, but that is a question of taste, and there is a majority in the Dutch parliament for this consultative referendum. And the people asking this referendum had to bring together about 400,000 to 450,000 signatures, so they were able to get this referendum going. I have lots of confidence in the Dutch voter. This is about an association agreement with Ukraine. It is not about Ukraine becoming a member of the EU, that is not the case. It is not about extra money going to Ukraine, but some of the people who oppose this association agreement are stating it is not about collective defence, like they will become a member of NATO, this is not the case. And it is not about the free movement of people, like we have within the European Union, where a person from Poland could decide to work in the Netherlands or in France, this is not the case. So I don't know why people are against this, because it is about tranquility, about stability at the borders of the European Union, and Ukraine is an important player. And let me just give you one reason why I believe Ukraine should not become a member of the European Union, because I want them to also, at the same time, build a strong relationship with Russia. The history of Russia, for a part, for a large extent, started in Ukraine, in Kiev. So it is only logical that also Russia wants Ukraine to build a relationship with Russia. The problem is that Putin and his government want for Ukraine to build this relationship with Russia exclusively, and not have a relationship with the European Union. And there, I'm in disagreement with the Russian administration. So I believe it is the right of the Ukrainian people to decide to build a relationship with Europe whilst at the same time building a strong relationship with Russia, which is difficult at the moment, because of what happened on Crimea and what is happening in the eastern part of Ukraine. So, but I cannot foresee a future where Ukraine is part of the European Union. Okay, the people, having asked for this referendum, have stated that it is about accession, it is about extra money, all these things, which is not true. So I'm at the top of my lungs arguing for what it is about, and I have great faith in the Dutch people, in the Dutch voters. So I believe a majority will support the association agreement next week on Wednesday. If not, we as a government have to decide what to do with the outcome of the referendum. We cannot give any idea of what we are going to do before the referendum. The law tells us explicitly we have to do this after the referendum, to reconsider and then to take a new decision. So we will do that, based on the outcome. And David Cameron's referendum, of course, is much bigger. I mean, this is about a possible Brexit. And I wholeheartedly hope that the UK will stay as a part of the European Union. It is the fifth-largest economy in the world, it is the second-largest economy of the European Union, and they play a vital role since the mid-'70s, when they joined the European Union. And I also think this is crucial for the UK itself. The UK, without its membership to the EU, is a mid-sized economy in the middle of the Atlantic Ocean. It is neither the US nor Europe. It is neither the US nor Europe. And the special relationship with Washington, I believe, is built not only on the cultural similarities, but also on the fact that Washington knows very well that through London, they can even build a strong relationship with the whole of Europe. So economically, politically and from a geostrategic point of view, I would argue they have to stay as members. And luckily, the Brits are a bit conservative, and when you're a conservative, you never vote for something when you do not know exactly what will be the result of that. So I hope that my assessment of the UK is right and that they will vote to stay in.
I share your optimism. And we are in, my last question before the opening up to the audience, we are in a presidential primary with a lot of rhetoric, and the Netherlands will also have elections, the Netherlands will also have elections later this year. And the party for Freedom of Wilders, who is currently in court for incitement of racial hatred, is, according to perhaps the polls, a large party in the country. Do you consider this party a potential coalition partner? And if not, how can you prevent this party from growing even larger and to keep him out of power, given what we're experiencing here in terms of the rhetoric in the United States?
Well, my party is the only party who has never excluded any other party from government. We have even worked together with the Wilders party in the previous government, they were not in the government itself, but they were supporting from parliament, giving some support from Parliament. At the municipal elections in 2014, he stated that he believed in the Netherlands we needed fewer Moroccans. And I then said this was something which I found unacceptable. And as long as that statement is not withdrawn, even my party will not work together, will not work with him. But even if we would have the willingness to work together, we would together not come to a majority, because we have quite a scattered electoral landscape with parties who are all about, well, the biggest... My party in the last elections won 27% of the vote, and was the biggest. And at the last provincial elections, my party was the biggest with 16% of the vote. I still remember Angela Merkel congratulating me, which again, becoming the biggest party in the provincial elections and therefore in the Senate, which is indirectly elected. And I told her, yes, it's true, I'm the biggest with 16% of the vote. And she said, that's almost the threshold in Germany. So that tells you something. Also here, I have great faith in the Dutch public. I know that people are worried about migration, about integration, about many issues in society. And some people will make this known by stating in the polls that they are going to vote for the Freedom Party. But we have to work very hard and have a good dialogue with the Dutch public in the upcoming elections in March next year. And then it's my conviction that many people will again return to the parties in the center, the center-right, the center-left, to make it possible to form a stable government.
Thank you. And I'll ask, would you like to have questions from the audience?
Please.
Your final question? We'd love to...
Well, if you were final, yeah.
I have one question, because I'm... One last question. We've heard a lot in the presidential debate on both sides about trade. And you said trade is important for prosperity. And we obviously have a TTIP deal right now, that some people are saying should be the end of the year, very ambitious. And can this trade agreement be an ambitious one, given the political climate in both Europe and the United States?
It has to, because if we have a sort of small trade deal, it will not work. I was amazed when I got this job in 2010 that we didn't close that deal in 1945. I thought this was the low-hanging fruit after the Second World War. And we are now here, 70 years later, there is still no trade deal between the EU and the US. Together, we have run... We have 800 million consumers, 800 million citizens. We are by far the largest trading bloc in the world, about 40% of world economy, working together in this big trade bloc. So it has to be ambitious. There's, of course, this issue of investor-to-state dispute settlement. That was an issue, and I think we are zoning in, closing in on solving that. And there have been very practical suggestions from the European Commission, and we from the presidency, holding this rotating presidency, have helped here. My minister for foreign trade and foreign aid, Liliane Plume, has been very instrumental in this. So I believe we can solve that particular issue of the investor-to-state dispute settlement. And if we have done that, there's still the issue of many sectors and how they will be part or not of this trade deal, and you might have to make one or two compromises there. But I would say we need an ambitious trade deal. This is what we owe to our citizens, and it will help us to anchor our relationship between the US and the EU. Also, in this trade deal, it will anchor together our history, our common values, and help us to move together to build a stronger relationship with Asia. And I think also for the US. And the pivot to Asia, as Barack Obama said when he got the presidency here, I never understood exactly what he meant, because the US on its own, building this pivot towards Asia, is less successful and not as strong as when the US and the EU have anchored together in this trade deal and then collectively work on a strong relationship with Asia. That's a totally different story. So both economically, trade, but also from a geopolitical point of view, I would very much argue to have an ambitious trade deal.
Thank you. And we would love to have students have questions. Please, we've got two microphones, and please state your name, and we're very delighted that you're asking questions. Oh, do you need some water?
Oh, please.
There's going to be a lot of questions.
You want some?
Thank you.
Thank you, Prime Minister, for making time on your trip to Washington here for us at American University. I'm an undergrad here in the School of International Service. And my question is about a potential Brexit. As you know, Rotterdam is a very important port for UK goods. In fact, there's a whole economic effect named after the port city for all the goods that flow through there to the UK. And so my question to you is, what do you see the potential effect for the Netherlands if the UK leaves the EU? And then would you pursue some kind of bilateral trade agreement with the UK separate of the EU if they were to leave the European Union?
Yes, well, that's what the UK is saying, and Cameron is stating. He's saying that if things go wrong in terms of the Brexit, that he will opt for bilateral trade deals between the UK and European countries, or that he wants to be part of this European economic area like Norway or Switzerland. So he is contemplating various models and options, but they are not ideal, and it will take time. This will not be done immediately after the referendum. So my argument would be for them to stay in, obviously, as I said before. And for the Netherlands, I have two reasons why I want them to stay in, except for my love for the UK, and I believe it is in their interest, but in our interest, from the Netherlands' point of view, first of all. Because exactly as you are saying, we have a strong economic relationship, we have a lot to gain from them staying in the European Union. And secondly, because of their mindset. The UK has a growth-oriented mindset, is market-oriented. And in the European Union, there are not that many countries who have a market-growth-oriented mindset. You have to look for Sweden, Poland, some of the others. But some of the bigger member states of the European Union are what the French would call a bit etatistic, starting from the states, starting from the central government. And that's not the way I want Europe to function. I want a strong economy, and of course, a liberal democracy, but also a strong economy. So for these two reasons, one, being very selfish for the Netherlands, and one, being for my love of the UK and the European Union, I believe they should stay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I first want to thank you, Mr. Prime Minister, for taking time to come speak to us. My name is Jax, I am a freshman here at AU. And my question for you is regarding NATO spending. As you touched on it, a lot of countries in NATO, as you probably know, do not keep up with the required percent spending. So my question for you is, do you think now, in the wake of ISIS and Russian aggression, do you think that NATO should really hammer into countries to keep up with the defense spending that's required? And do you also think this will help to curb ISIS extremism and stop Russian aggression?
Yes, well, I do believe that, step by step, every country should fulfill the pledge that we should at least spend 2% of our national income on defense. And this was also the outcome of the NATO summit in Wills in 2014, with a renewed commitment to the 2% mark. My country is not there yet. We have increased defense spending. After first cutting the budget, we are now increasing defense spending year by year. And there is a commitment from Parliament and government to, if there is space, room, that we will keep on increasing defense spending. And looking at it from a US point of view, I can understand why, because the American economy is about 50% of the total economy of all the NATO countries combined. Two countries here in the American side of NATO and 24 in Europe. And the 24 have about 50% of the economy, and here, Canada and the US have the other 50%. But at the moment, the US is spending about 70% to 75% of all NATO investments. So I think it makes total sense for the US to require the others to step up the game. And as you said, with all the threats which we are facing at the moment, it makes total sense for NATO to have a more balanced budget and, if possible, an increased budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Prime Minister. My name is Frieder Dangler, I'm a student from Germany. I'm a graduate student of global security here. In the aftermath of the terror attacks, there's always a discussion how to better protect the people in Europe. And my question is, how can we improve our security and improve our responses to terror attacks without threatening the whole idea of a European way of life, having the ability to move around freely and live peacefully? Thank you.
Yes, well, this is a very sensitive issue, of course. The balance between increasing security and at the same time maintaining our values, as you said, in free movement, but also privacy. And we constantly have to look at the balance. At the same time, I am absolutely convinced that it is not always the case, that when you increase security, that it will mean that you will have less of privacy, or that it will work against some of the other values you were rightly mentioning. For example, you can build in privacy issues by design in many systems and programs we are working on collectively in Europe or as individual countries. That's one of the ways to deal with this potential imbalance between privacy and security. But it is totally clear at the moment that we have to move to more security, that we have to do more investments. Currently, the European Parliament is debating the passenger name records, which is to capture the movements of people, which I think is necessary to be able to better fight terrorism in the future. But this is a difficult issue, and a sensitive one, because immediately, of course, people will say, yeah, what does this mean in terms of privacy? Yeah, I understand. But we... So partly, we can do this by design, and that's the easy answer. And sometimes, this is a difficult trade off, where I think that we have to move towards more security spending and more security laws, which might now and then hurt some of the aspirations in terms of privacy and, as you rightly said, our way of life. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prime Minister, for coming to SIS. My name is Stephanie, and I'm a recent graduate of the School of International Service. My question is, what do you see as a viable way forward to deepen European integration? There's a lot of social... There's a lot of political and economic identity with Europe, but social is something that is lacking, especially with so many immigrants. So what would your solution be?
Well, I would say my starting position would be the internal market, because this is where it started. After the Second World War, there was this ideal that would... Neve de Krieg, no more war in the future. This was one of the reasons why the European Union was established, by the six founding members, amongst them France and Germany, who had been at the core of two world wars, the first one, the second one, and even the big war in the 1870s, was a war between France and Germany. So this was historical. And now for 70 years, we have peace in Europe. But at the core was the internal market. And here, it is a bit like when Gandhi visited the United Kingdom, and he was asked what his view was about British civilization. And Gandhi said, it would be a good idea. And that would be a bit my reaction to a question, what do you think about the internal market? It would be a good idea, because at the moment, we only have an internal market functioning for products which you can hold. But in terms of digital, capital, energy, services, we are not there yet. And one of the things we want to deliver as a European, as a Dutch presidency of the European Union by the 1st of July, is a concerted agenda, a concerted action list, where we will fulfill the ambitions of the internal market. So this is one way to do this. It will lead to more prosperity, it will integrate deeper. At the same time, we have to look at some of the social aspects of the European internal market. So it also has to be fair. And one of the issues we are looking at is the posting of workers directive, and we think you should have equal pay for equal circumstances. And of course, it can still differ between countries, but within the country, it should not be that somebody from Poland can earn considerably less than somebody from Holland or Belgium. They should more or less earn the same salary. So these are a few of the things we are looking at. And in terms of integration, I think that is primarily a national issue. There are many different approaches, and one is working better than the other. But at the core, as we started our discussion, I think, is this idea that when people come to Europe, that we have to engage in a dialogue about what we are, what is our way of life, and that we want them to be part of that, to be successful. Just one example, we are discussing our budget for next year, and then we are saying we had so many refugees coming to the Netherlands. That means that statistically, the amount of welfare payments will go up. And I find that extremely depressing. I said, why? Okay, statistically, it's right, because in the past, having fewer refugees would lead to higher welfare payments. But I don't want them to be welfare, I want them to have a job, or their own company or whatever. Okay, this is not dreaming, we have to get this done, because it is extremely depressing to have a debate about more refugees means more welfare. And the best way to integrate is to have a job or your own company and to be successful. That's the best way to integrate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Prime Minister. My name is Rachel Bernard, and I'm an undergraduate here in the School of International Service. Over the past few years, you've gone on the record a couple of times about your position on free speech, including that you would legalize hate speech and Holocaust denial as part of encompassing all freedom of speech. How do you justify that position, especially coming from a country that has been so welcoming in history to those who are escaping persecution, when that speech that you would want to legalize is not only hateful but attacks people's beings and lives and makes it a dangerous situation for them to live in?
Well, what I've said is that we can learn from the United States. The United States has a... The freedom of speech in the United States is almost complete. And that has an advantage, that when somebody is stating crazy things, is stating facts, is denying, whatever, you can then engage in a debate, have a discussion, and show to the other people that what this guy is saying, or what this woman is saying, is totally offline. You're against it, at the top of your lungs, fighting against what he or she is saying. And I believe society gets stronger by that. And if you have limitations on freedom of speech, people will still say what they think, will still think what they think, they will do that in underground, they will do that in secrecy, you cannot see where this is happening, where legalization is taking place. So that, in general, is the reason why I think we need more freedom of speech. And the Netherlands, by the way, it's also quite good at the moment. So we are not at this moment pushing for new policies here, because in many cases, as long as you are not directing somebody or incentivizing somebody else to basically hurt somebody else, as long as you're not doing that, the freedom of speech is quite well-established.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. I guess in the wake of the Brussels attack, many people, especially in the United States, have been critical of intelligence sharing and domestic terror prevention efforts in Europe. So I guess moving forward, which organization, the EU or NATO, is better equipped to handle these efforts?
Well, I think the EU has to play a role here, clearly. At the same time, we have to make sure that our intelligence agencies work together in a speedy way, in a successful way. My information is from at least the Dutch intelligence community, that they have very close working relationships with the sister organizations in other European countries. This passenger name record issue is important, that at least at the European level, we establish the necessary laws and systems, so that we can follow and trace the terrorists and be able to grab them before they are able to attack. And there we have to do more. So as I stated in Parliament this week, I think we are making progress, but we have to speed it up. And during our presidency, between now and the 1st of July, we will take a number of initiatives to speed up that process. But I do not think that NATO is the first I would think of. It is the nation-states, intergovernmental, and the EU where applicable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you for coming, Mr. Prime Minister. I'm actually very interested in hearing your opinions on, while you talk of economic integration and cooperation between the EU and North America. What are your feelings concerning the Chinese-led One Belt, One Road initiative, especially seen as the President of China has just yesterday met in the Czech Republic concerning, you know, its developments? If you have any ideas and thoughts and beliefs on that?
Well, I told them I don't mind that road, as long as it ends in Rotterdam Harbor. And not somewhere in Germany or whatever. I mean, these initiatives are bound to happen. I mean, China is on a rise, is developing its economic economy very quickly, in a fast pace. We have the Asia Investment and Infrastructure Bank, which is being established, and we are... And the US was not... And we are, and the US was not very fond of this, but many of the European partners have decided to be part of that initiative. We have the Asia Development Bank and the World Bank. I hope the three of them will work together on this. Because there is a lot of infrastructure to be done. The One Road, One Belt initiative, I mean, yeah, China can do this. Their sovereign rights, and as long as other countries voluntarily are willing to participate, it could help in terms of creating closer links between the European and the Chinese economies. But this is another reason why I believe that we have to close this US-EU trade deal. Because, as I was stating earlier, that I don't believe the US on its own has enough force to really be successful in a pivot towards Asia. I also think that the EU on its own will not be as successful as when we worked together. Because the biggest trading bloc in the world, no one can beat. It's clear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Erste wil grag zeggen, dank u wel voor je komen vandaag. Thank you for coming today.
U spreekt Nederlands?
Een beetje, ik ben aan het leren. Anyways, I'm learning, so...
Where are you going? Are you American, or?
American, for fun.
Well, fantastic. You know that if the history had been a little bit different, we would all speak Dutch here, right?
Oh, indeed, I know.
My question for you today is about climate change. So the Netherlands', since its sea level is very vulnerable to climate change and rising sea levels, so what are the Dutch doing to combat climate change? And what can the United States and the European Union at large learn from the Dutch?
Well, you rightly said, we have a big stake in preventing climate change. One-third of the country is below sea level. Schiphol Airport, one of the biggest airports of Europe, is below sea level. And we have a whole history of building dikes and dams to keep the water out. And as somebody said, God created the earth, and the Dutch created the Netherlands. Which, for one-third, is literally true. Because it was not there, but you see, it was all water, and then somehow, we were able to get some land out of it. That means that we have to fight climate change. There is also another reason to do that, because we know that the fossil fuels are not endless. We want to decrease the dependence on Russia, the Middle East. We want, I think that's true for the United States, but a lot is happening here, but also for Europe, to be less dependent. So these are all very good reasons to work on innovation in terms of climate. And the Netherlands is doing that. One of the things we are working on, of course, is water management. If your water is not clean enough, if you have too much water, if you do not have enough water, in all these cases, we are your partner. So when I travel the world, be it in Bangladesh, where there is too much water, or to some other countries where there is too much drought, or to India, where they are working on programs to clean the Ganges River, for example, the Netherlands is presenting its solutions rooted in our history. At the same time, it is our ambition to be able to deliver one or two big solutions to one of the big issues still related to climate change. One of them, of course, is to capture current strom, not Stromwastauer, to batteries. And I was visiting San Francisco and speaking with the Tesla people in early February. And this is one of the big issues, that when you are able to, for electricity to be captured and stored. And this is still one of the issues we have to find a solution for. And we want to be a partner of everybody who is working on that, because this will be a big breakthrough when it is being established. And of course, electrical cars are an integral part of such a solution, in my view.
All right, dank u wel.
Dank u wel.
Hi, Prime Minister. My name is Maria Khalaf, and I am a master student here in global security. And I have kind of a personal story and question. So I have a friend in Syria, and he is of military age, and the military is trying to draft him. And so in order to avoid that, he's basically gotten a bunch of degrees that he doesn't need. And he's tried to apply to a bunch of European universities, but whenever he gets to the interview, the diplomatic interview, they don't let him, and they don't give him a visa. So are there any, and now he's talking to me about, you know, doing one of these dangerous boat treks to Europe. And I don't know what to say, you know? I mean, I understand he wants to flee the war, he doesn't want to be involved, and he doesn't want to fight. But on the other hand, I wish there were more legal pathways to refugee status or citizenship, and I'm sure there are. But can you talk a little bit more about that, and how you plan on increasing those avenues?
Is he still living in Syria, or is he now?
He's, he actually is in Sierra Leone, doing a temporary visa, like work visa. But it's going to expire soon, he has to go back to Syria.
Yes, well, in my vision, we should have a system, and we are working on that, where when people, but most of them will be at that stage, living in Turkey, or Lebanon, or Jordan, having flat Syria. As you know, 11 million Syrians are on the run, 7 million living outside Syria by now, and 4 million internally displaced people within Syria. So this is an enormous thing going on, and with a lot of pain, and personal pain for so many families, having lost people or having been teared apart as families. But I think what we need to have, and that's what we are working on, is a resettlement scheme, where we don't accept that the burden is completely on Jordan, on Lebanon, and Turkey, that we as a European Union, but also United States. And you had Justin Trudeau over a couple of weeks ago from Canada. He is also working on this. That with many other countries, we are willing to alleviate some of the pressure out of these camps by taking people to Canada, the US, the Middle East, European Union countries, et cetera. That's what we are working on. This is this Turkey-EU deal agreement is basically trying to establish that system. But this is really step by step. It goes slow, because it is such an enormous thing to get going. For example, to get these first people to return from Greece into Turkey early next week, and then from Turkey, on this one-by-one case, to have Syrians to be brought into the European Union. Well, currently, when I leave here, I will be on the phone again, because there's a bunch of people, which, and of course, the European Commission being in the lead here, and Donald Trump, the President of the European Council, we are working on that to make that happen. And that's the first step to get a resettlement scheme going, and to go from regular migration to regular migration.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Premier, Premier Ruiten, dank u wel voor je komst. Als een Nederlander ben ik erg blij dat u een beetje van Nederland naar ons toebrengt. Sorry for the Dutch people.
His Dutch was excellent, I can tell you.
Thank you, I've been working on it. For someone who's lived here for five years, my Dutch has gone kind of downhill. But what I'm curious about is, as President of the European Council in July, what are your goals? Like, I know there's a lot of problems with security in the EU right now. And, but for the Netherlands, climate change is always an issue that presses on our mind, and that might even be a bigger security issue in the back of our heads always. How are you planning to address these things? And how are you planning to foster cooperative efforts on these two issues?
I had yesterday evening at the residence of the Dutch Ambassador to the UN in New York, dinner with all the permanent representatives at the UN from the countries whose head of state or government is a member of a sort of high-level water panel from the World Bank and the UN. And the discussion focused on this creeping issue of climate change and the creeping issue of rising sea levels. Because it goes slowly, but as you rightly said, many things result from that. Refugee, wars, poverty, so it has a huge, it really has a huge impact. And holding this presidency, our aims are to deepen, have a deeper and fairer internal market, so to increase the overall level of prosperity in the European Union. We want to implement the results of COP21. And this is to your point, the November 30th summit we had in Paris, as you all know, with the whole world being there. And I think we got to some ambitious results, the 2%, but even we put as a dot on the horizon, the 1.5% aim. Of course, not yet completely operationalized, but at least it was accepted as a vision for the future. And the 2% has now, at a very operational level, been implemented. And that has to be implemented as well by the European Union. And we will work on that over the next two or three months. And of course, holding the presidency means coping with crises, the Brexit, the refugee crisis, so that will also be on our plate. But I would like to be remembered by having a presidency where we were able to come to a deeper and fair internal market, to operationalize the results from COP21, and to make the European Union, by doing that, more relevant. Because that, at the end, is also the best way to fight the cynicism about this, yeah, organization.
Thank you.
And you are studying here at?
I'm returning home in May, actually, so I'll be back in the...
You're finished here?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I just finished.
You're going to work for the government, or?
I'm actually going to attend University of Utrecht.
Okay, well...
Should be interesting.
The dean has worked at the University of Utrecht.
Dank u wel.
Okay, dank u wel.
Mr. Prime Minister, I'd like to thank you for coming out. I think it's great that AU can host so many international figures. You've said in your speech today that the Netherlands and the US have a very strong trade connection, and there have been certain presidential candidates who think that we should renegotiate all of our trade deals, because we don't win. What is your response to this? Because I think that for our European partners, the trade deals we have in place now are sufficient, but obviously, other people have different opinions.
So you're questioning why we need this transatlantic trade and investment partnership?
Yes, like, what would your response be to this certain candidate?
Well, I don't think the whole thing will crumble if we do not get to a TTIP. Then we will just carry on as we are doing at the moment. But I'm absolutely convinced that if you would get this trade deal, that it will help to unleash an enormous amount of potential in terms of future wealth creation, both for the US and for the European Union member states. Always the difficulty is that getting to a trade deal means that you have to make choices and trade-offs. And that, of course, you will always only hear the ones on the wrong side of the trade-off. They will be audible, they will be very visible. So we also need to hear the people who are saying, no, this, at the end, will collectively create a bigger thing together. The whole thing will be bigger than its parts. And I think that we can do that. We can even, during the Obama presidency, we could even, at the end of this year, be at a point where we could say, well, this thing is now ready to sign. I hope we will get there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Goedemiddag, Premier, welkom op onze universiteit. My name is Borak, my last name is Nadeema, unfortunately. I'm studying international law, my masters at American University, Washington College of Law. And I have a question about...
You're from Holland, from the Netherlands?
I am, yes, I'm from the Netherlands. I've been working at the Immigration Department within the Ministry in the Netherlands for several years, and we were facing a lot of problems with asylum of Syrian refugees, because it was very hard to distinguish if these are human traffickers, if these are members of ISIS, if these are real refugees. And I was wondering, right now, there is agreement between the European Union and Turkey, and these Syrian refugees, 2.9 million, are going to end up being a Turkish citizen one day, maybe after five years or less, I don't know. How is the European Union going to manage the fact that Syrian refugees, who will become a Turk after several years, will be able to travel free without a visa to the European Union, and maybe stay legally in the Netherlands or any other country within the Shanghan area?
Well, I think a couple of things. First of all, as part of implementing visa liberalization, which is what Turkey aims for, and they've even said that in the context of this agreement between the EU and Turkey on refugees, they want to speed up that process and have visa liberalization by the 1st of July. Part of that will be for them to deliver all the 72 requirements. That includes the necessary safeguards that they know who is living in Turkey, who are living in Turkey, and that they know, living in Turkey, are going to travel to all parts of the world. This is one way to deal with this. Secondly, I know that Turkey itself has great interest, of course, to know who is now amongst the 2.9 million. And if the EU starts to alleviate the pressure by having resettlement programs out of the refugee camps and communities in the south of Turkey, of Syrians into the European Union, we also will have to do all these safety checks, which we are, by the way, also doing currently when people come in an irregular way through the Netherlands. And you worked for the IND, you said?
I did, yes.
We have, since November, since the Paris attacks, we have upped that game by being sure that in the first couple of days, we do as much as possible to make sure that we know who is coming to the Netherlands, if it is a Syrian refugee. Because you always have to risk, of course, that somebody is amongst that group with bad intentions. So I think that this is a very good point, and we have to make sure that also in this visa liberalization program and process, we cover that point.
Dank u wel.
What are you going to do after?
I'm going to apply for a Dutch foreign service, so I might get your business cards afterwards.
That's great. A lot of Dutch.
Goedemiddag.
Goedemiddag.
My question is about you personally. Like, you have a career in foreign service and in civil service, a career that many of us here dream of. My question to you is, what is a piece of advice that you wish someone would have told you before you entered the civil service? And what, if you have any advice for the lot of us here who want to do what you do?
Well, my travels have been a bit complex. I started as a history student in Leiden University, sorry, not Utrecht, but also a good one. In Leiden University, then I joined Unilever, so I worked in business for 10 years. As a hobby, I was a member of my political party. And in 2002, my then-party leader called me. I didn't even know the guy, but somehow, he was tipped by somebody else. We lost the elections, we were still becoming part of the new government as a junior partner in 2002. And he asked me to become State Secretary for Social Affairs. And I thought, well, yeah, I have this crazy hobby, politics, and this will only happen once that you get this call. So let's make the change and move from Unilever, from business life, into politics. And I liked it there. So at first, I thought, I'll do this for four years, I told this to the press, I will only do this for one term, and then I'll return to business life. And, well, here I am, still, 14 years later, still being in politics. And in 2006, I was able to grab the leadership of my party. And then in 2010, we turned out to be the biggest party in the elections. Ooh, a piece of advice. What works best for me, but this is very personal, I mean, everybody will react different to this, but what works best for me is not to plan too much. When you have all these steps carefully scheduled out, and, well, I will first take this job, because that will give me that other job, and then I will do these studies. I mean, also follow your heart. In everything you do, you have to be a bit scholistic, you have to be really interested. Even in my spare time, I'm still reading political biographies. And that is a bit nerdy, a bit crazy, I know. But it is because I really like my job, and what I'm doing at the moment. And there's this fantastic new biography authorized, well, she is dead now, Margaret Thatcher, but she authorized this guy, Charles Moore, to write this biography of hers. And the second installment is a fascinating read. I hope many of you will have a chance to, or maybe already have read it, or the first part of it. So don't plan too much, that is my only, and follow your heart, and your interests, and make sure that your job is your hobby. And never accept a job, because that job will then deliver the job you wanted to do. Because that job you are then holding in the meantime, you will not do very well. So you'll never get that second job, because people think you're not good enough. So allow for some strange choices, and for people to ask you something, oh, okay, I'll do it. And see where you end up. And it helps not to have too high mortgages. I have a low mortgage, and that makes it easier. I'm not from a rich background, so my family has no money. I have no money, but with low mortgage, you can still make strange choices.
Dank u wel.
We have a couple more questions. You're okay with a couple more questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prime Minister, for giving us the chance to talk to us today. I am Mohamed, I'm from Egypt, I'm attending American University, but basically, I'm studying at Kaven University. Here's my point. In the program of the Netherlands presidency of the Council of the European Union, it is stated that the EU has to act on a comprehensive approach to migration and international security. More specific, it is stated that the program highlights the importance of addressing the political and economic root causes of migration crisis. To this point, my question is, what did the EU achieve so far in this regard? And why is the EU's common foreign and security policy hardly common? And why is the EU's common security and defi- And why is the EU's common security and defense policy almost uncommon? Thank you. Almost uncommon.
Well, at the moment, as you probably know, we are working on this new security and defense policy. There is always, well, one of reasons, I think, why this is always a difficult process is because it is being done whilst at the same time, most of the EU member states are also a member of NATO. So the first question will be, what will you do? What has to be done in the NATO context, and what has to be done in the EU context? And as our moderator, I'm a transatlanticist, so I believe strongly in NATO and that our defense policy, our security policy should be rooted in the North Atlantic partnership within NATO. And that doesn't prevent you to work together. I mean, our security forces and army and navy are working closely together with Germany. We have almost, we've integrated parts of our army with the German army, we've integrated parts of our navy with the Belgians and some others. So we are working together on many fronts. But this, is my view, has made it difficult to really come up with a common defense policy, security policy, which is strongly rooted in the European Union. You even have seen this when the High Commissioner, Federica Mocharini, is now holding that role. She was not allowed, or her predecessor, Katie Ashton, was not allowed to be named Foreign Minister of the European Union. So we now have this strange title of High Commissioner, which you had in the past when countries still had colonies. You would have a High Commissioner going to the colony in the 19th century. And now we have a High Commissioner within the European Commission. Difficult. So I think your point is absolutely right. We have to do more there, but it is very difficult, because we are constantly betting on two horses at the same time, NATO and EU. So we need your help.
So what about the common foreign and security policy?
The common?
Yeah, it's contentious, it's sometimes subject to national interest, and sometimes it is vulnerable to...
We do have, of course, a European...
Okay, yeah.
We do have all these European embassies now, and we have the, under Federica Mocharini, we now have a European diplomatic service working in the whole world. But also, sometimes in conjunction, sometimes fighting the embassies of the member states. Yeah, you're not there yet, clearly not.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello, thank you for being here today, Mr. Prime Minister. My name is Caitlin Ross, and I'm an undergraduate student studying history and business at American University. So my question to you is, what role do you think history plays in business and international trade today as coming off of the 20th century?
You mean history?
Yes.
What he can learn from history? Alas, but I'm a historian myself. And I don't think that it's a sort of circular system, that everything comes back. I don't think that's true. But still, you can still learn a lot. For example, when we had this discussion yesterday in the residence of the PRMRAP in New York, the Dutch PRMRAP, and discussing water, Russell Shorto, the American writer, who wrote this fantastic book, The Island at the Center of the World, which is about Manhattan and the Dutch roots of Manhattan, and Peter Stuyvesant, et cetera. That's why I was making this joke, that if this guy had been a bit more clever, then we would all speak Dutch here now. And while many of us still do. So history is of crucial importance, because then he explained how the Dutch in the 14th and 15th century were developing themselves, not in the manner type of societies, where you have a castle, and you have a baron or a prince living there, and then you have all these other people working for him or her. But that we had from the start, a sort of automatic democracy, because working together, we all had to make sure that these dykes and dams were built and maintained, et cetera. Then we were discussing what is happening in the world, from Bangladesh to Japan to many other countries being present at the table, Mexico, whatever. And then we found that having to fight with all these issues around water, the climate change, et cetera, that still we can learn from that Dutch Polder model, that Dutch model that started in the 14th and 15th century. And then to study what happened, and why things were working, and why some other parts were not working as well as intended, it can help you to prevent some of the mistakes. So I don't think you can literally repeat what happened in history. And I don't hope that this is the way we live our lives. But still, we can learn from history if we see similarities. And this is just one example.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Makaya. I am a grad student here in the National Peace and Conflict Resolution, and I'm also President of the Makaya Foundation, and I'm from the DXC.
DXC?
DXC, yes, Congo.
Yeah.
I love your national soccer team, and I'm sure someday, someday you guys will win World Cup. I have a couple of questions. Recently, the Secretary of State, John Kerry, he stated that Daesh is committing a genocide against Christians and Shia Muslim. Would you agree that the process of building a state, it can be genocidal, as we saw from the Holocaust, Rwanda, the Native Americans, Cambodia? They claim, the ISIS claim, for their building state. So what is the difference between for the Daesh genocide and where the Pas genocide that were...
Oh, being a historian, I'm extremely cautious in using these words, because they have meanings in many different cultures, many different intentions behind the words. I mean, we have seen the discussions between Turkey and Armenia, everywhere in the world where this word has been used. So I would stick with the facts as we know them, and that is that Daesh, ISIL, ISIS, that this is an extremely violent organization, that we have decided from the Dutch side not to only be active in the air campaign on the Iraqi side, but also on the Syrian side now, with our F-16s, because we think that we have to contain them, to fight them, and hopefully to be able to return this land to Syria and to Iraq, and to end this caliphate, as they call this. But I will refrain a bit from the words you're using, because they have meaning in many cultures and many different backgrounds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Prime Minister, thank you very much for coming, and thank you for taking my question. My name is Meron Agirian, and I'm a graduate student here at SIS. I wanted to ask your views on European Union's policy towards Iran after the nuclear deal, and how do you view the new visa waiver program restrictions, and will there be any European Union...
Iran, you had mentioned, yeah. Well, of course, we hear it was clear that the US was in the lead with the deal Barack Obama was able to close with Iranian leadership. I had the opportunity a couple of years ago to meet with President Rouhani in Davos, and we have had a first mission, I think, in Ministry of Economic Affairs of the Netherlands into Iran. We, from the Netherlands side, the Dutch side, want to be part of this new development. Of course, it will be important that the deal will be implemented, because this is also about confidence building. And as you know, many people are very worried about the agreement Obama, America, and Iran agreed, and the implementation, and whether we are able through the IAEA and other organizations to follow step by step, whether this deal will be implemented as intended, will be important to build trust. And that's the first stage now, because so much trust has been lost since 1979, 1980. And this is an opportunity to rebuild that trust, with a very proud country, highly educated, enormous economic potential Iran has. But still, the recent history is such that it will take years, I think, to rebuild that trust. And that will be the first step before we can go any further. And we want to be part of that, the Dutch.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prime Minister. I spend like most of my summers in Netherlands, like practically in Den Haag. So this question is not only for me, but it's also for my friends in University of Groningen.
Groningen?
Yeah.
Great.
I have a...
It's north of the country. Well, the north means two hours from the Hague, but...
It was a long train ride, yes. It was a long train ride when I went up there, so... The question I wanted to ask is, like, Europe isn't facing such a turbulent time. What is Netherlands' position on NATO's expansion in Eastern and Central Europe right now? Would it help with the energy and security problems that...
EU's expansion?
NATO's.
NATO's expansion?
Yeah.
Well, of course, at the moment, we are looking, for example, at Georgia.
Yes.
That's one of the countries where we're working with. They have established this ambition to become a member of NATO. This is a very sensitive issue, because there are two ways to look at this. One is the way Henry Kissinger explained to me when I visited him in New York. By the way, he's 92 years old now, still travels the whole world, is full-time, working full-time. And I had an hour and a half with him, and he told me, I have only half an hour, an hour and a half. I said, and then I'm off to China, and then to Egypt, and then back to Washington. I said, you're 92? Yes. And the question is, okay. But extraordinary guy. But he gave me this one puzzle. He said the distance between Moscow and the West was 3,000 kilometers before the Berlin Wall came down. After the Berlin Wall came down, if Ukraine, and I'm not in favor of that, but if Ukraine would have an exclusive relationship with Europe and have no relationship with Russia, then that distance would be only 1,000 kilometers. So 2,000 kilometers less than in 1989 compared to now. And I think we have, when we discuss expansion of NATO, we constantly also have to remind ourselves of this psychology, and what that means in terms of our relationship with Russia. And that doesn't mean that I'm against these ambitions. I understand the ambitions of many countries in the East, close to Russia, to become members of NATO. But I think as a NATO alliance, discussing this step by step, we also have to take this into account. So there is no simple yes or no to that question. But we constantly have to balance these facts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much for the wonderful question and answer session from the students. We saw a surge in the Dutch language used here. I think we're going to see a surge of the Dutch language on campus, and many people who will want to come and spend time studying in the Netherlands. So we wish you most success in your next visit, in your next event, which is meeting with President Obama. Thank you.
Thank you.